We will now call meeting of the Fayette County School Corporation Board of School Trustees Business Meeting to order. We are here at the Administration Building. It is Tuesday, September 11th, 2018, and it's 6:30 PM. I would like to invite everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, but first we're going to have a moment of silence in commemoration of September 11th.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to begin tonight with requesting a motion to approve the agenda as submitted and amended. Hi, Salmo. Thank you, Anne. Do I hear a second?
Madam President, how do you do?
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the patron comments. However, our superintendent has some new information related to the location of the panels that I think will probably be information that would be valuable before you made your patron comments. So if you all are comfortable with waiting until we get to that agenda item, it is further down anyway, so that allows you a chance, if you still want to speak, prior to us discussing that. Is that... I'm just seeing nods.
(inaudible).
Yeah. So that would affect... Alrighty. So we'll now move on to the consent agenda, which includes the approval of minutes from the regular business meeting of 14:18, the board work session of 8:21:18, and the special meeting of 8:30:18. The personnel report, retirements, resignations, leaves of absences, the approval of the August 2018 claims, number 50688 through 50961, and the donation from New Heights Christian Church of $500 for each elementary school to meet the needs of students. Yeah. That's pretty exciting. Okay. I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Lori. Do I hear a second?
No, second.
Thank you, Mark. Any discussion? I think we just want to give a big shout out to New Heights Christian Church. I saw a few things on the school corporation website, Facebook page where different schools were acknowledging their receipt of that, so I just think that's wonderful, so.
I think this is the second year they've done that.
Second year. Is that right, Brian? Second year they've done this? No.
(inaudible).
Okay. Great. Thank you. Okay. I'd like to ask for... We already have the motion. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll now move on to the action items. First item is our personnel report, recommendations for employment. Mr. Collins.
Thank you. I'm not Mike Serqua. I cannot fill this use, but I am the acting HR director tonight, so. We have some recommendations for employment. First is Kelly Flum McCollum as interim Head Start Coordinator, required by Head Start Policies and Guidelines, effective September 15th, the day after Lloyd Bonds retires. Olivia Richards, Certified Staff Spanish Teacher, CHS. Jessica Duval, Education Assistant at Fayette Central. Megan Robbins, Educational Diagnostician for the district, working at our center of Fayette Special Services. And then Chris Bloom as our head girls tennis coach, effective for the season, in the spring. Second, I have just some minor language changes. It's part of the health insurance benefit that our maintenance and custodial and mechanics had, and it's just a small change, and they have received the district contribution for the single PPO insurance premium, so we've added some language that they've approved, that their leadership has with us, where if they choose a high deductible plan, the difference in that amount of the premium can go into an HSA for them. So that's the language change with that, and these contributions will be made semi-annually in January and July each year if they choose that high deductible plan, so they'll get the full benefit that is currently $7,109 for that high single PPO plan. So that's the change.
And we don't need to bring those out as separate action items.
No, this could all be approved together.
Okay. Alright. I'd like to entertain a motion for the personnel report.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Andy. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Anne. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll now move on to the resolution to establish Education Fund and Operations Fund. Ms. Callen-Tolliver.
Thank you, Mrs. Jacobs. As you're all aware, the legislature with House Bill 1009 sort of tore down the various silos for school funding. We no longer will have general fund, capital projects, bus replacement, transportation. We will have an education and an operations fund. As such, they have mandated that the schools pass a resolution to establish those funds, since we will be considering... We'll have a budget hearing, hearing a little bit, but the budgets will be presented for your approval next month. It seemed prudent to get the funds actually established this month, so.
I feel like we've been talking about these funds for a long time, preparing us. No doubt. Okay. I'd like to seek a motion for the resolution to establish the Education Operations Fund.
I so move, Madam President.
Thank you. Chris, do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Lori. Any discussion?
Are there any funds that are retired? Does this eliminate?
Well, this eliminates the general fund, the bus replacement, the transportation, and the capital projects fund. They actually do not go away until January of next year, because when we get to December 30th, 31st, and pay all of the bills in January, we will transfer the balance of the general fund to the education fund, and the balance of the other three funds to the operations fund. And those resolutions will be presented with a long list of things this year for the budgeting process at the December meeting to make those... to give me the authority to make those transfers in January.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay. The next is the approval for the design plans for the CHS Activity Center. Mr. Collins, do you want to start, or Ms. Callen-Tolliver?
Sure. I will. We have Mike Ship here with Fanny and Howie, and he has the final design plans, and I just... I want to say how much I appreciate the work, how responsive they've been to all of our staff, and listening to their feedback, and trying to implement as many things as possible to it, so. Just putting it over to Mike and...
(inaudible). You won't be able to do that.
(inaudible). Do you have a presentation?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Well, that's okay.
(inaudible). Thank you.
Alright. Well, some of this information you've seen in a last board meeting, but I wanted to give you an update and some things that have been transpired since having additional staff meetings, and it'd be good for everybody else to see it as well, so. So we've had our second rounds of meetings with district leadership, athletic leadership, high school leadership, maintenance. We've had discussions about mechanical, electrical, plumbing. We've reached out to utility companies, so all of those things have occurred. So what's left, recurring meetings with your leadership group. We've got to have security and technology conversations, so that actually gets into... I'll leave an example on the door hardware and how the mechanisms and your security system, so that gets into what we call the weeds of the real fine tuning. Out of courtesy, we'll meet with the city planner, just to make sure that when the contractors at some point in time, when you award this project, that that permit process goes through as smooth as possible, so always try to reach out to them. Also, you know, the fire chiefs, fire chief's always another good person to reach out, and you'll see why here in a moment, and what we talked about last time. Then we'll have a pre-bid meeting with potential bidders, and what that is, that'll be held here on... in probably in this room right here, and any potential bidders, it will be advertised. We already got the words out to several, what we call host of companies that host documents for that contractors pay a fee to go make sure they know all the projects that are bidding. So those are the things that are ongoing right now. Alright. So really no changes on the site plan, but we're just looking to make sure that as a ward that... that we're not going to change it from three cords to two cords. You know, granted, we'll still be doing fine tuning over the next months before we release this project, as we get more pieces and parts of information, and continue to fine tune. Alright, I'll get the hang of this in just a moment. One of the things that occurred since the last time we had the conversations was conversations with the stormwater. And anytime when you pave a surface, you build hard surface, you're taking up a lawn surface, so... And the city requirements, we were hoping to be exempt, but we're not exempt. It's not uncommon. At least they're not making us bring the whole site up to current day standards. Only what we're doing. So we're building a field house about 26,000 square feet with some office area and all that. So everything in red, you see the directional areas on the screen, that's kind of the natural flow of the water on this campus, and then if you... Now, if you stand out here and you stand out in the road, it all comes down the hill a little bit, so you know that it's going there. But what we'll have to do is hold that water back temporarily and meter it out at the same rate as it was if that building... this building was never built. So we're looking to reshape that where the white three arrows over there between the ring road and the west parking lot, so we can do that, and that's... we're trying to be as surgical and cost-effective as possible. This is pretty informal, so.
Does that just involve some grading?
That's involved some very good, so that's what that... And, you know, our goal is always to make it movable, so that... so it's good for your... you know, it's not incumbents are the challenge for your maintenance team. So if you recall, last time, maybe a big deal about the courtyard exiting, we've come to the conclusion that we've got our numbers now, and we've analyzed all the spaces, and we believe that we only need four exits out of there. Now, I'll meet with the local fire chief, I've had with our co-consumer, and essentially the only existing exit that we would have to modify, we're comfortable if we have two... even though they're right next to each other, the exits one and two that you see towards the north gate, that's still about 70 feet apart, so that puts things in perspective for you. So even though there's... we can count that as two exits because they're the distance, we can potentially get one exit through the area that we're building, the new construction through the Spartan Activity Center in the purple, but we still have to look at having a fourth exit. The reason we have to have a fourth exit, anytime we have over 1,000 people in one area, you have to have four distinct exits. And the... once you have a courtyard that's fully enclosed or secured, the state treats that as another room, so that's how that works, so.
And can you explain again, since we don't have 1,000 students out there, why that...
That's a good question.
I know you went over it last time. I forgot.
I did.
And the patrons.
So, okay, you take a classroom that's 900 square feet. I'll use 900 as an example, because I can do the math. So if you take that and you divide that by 20 students per square foot, even though you know that you won't have... The code tells you that you need, for every 20 square foot, that can accommodate one person in an educational classroom. That's 45 kids in that classroom. Well, how many classrooms of a math classroom where English classroom has 45 students in? It's just not a realistic number, but that's why we have, say, buildings, because they're oversized, and we have to size everything, from the door to the corridor, to the stairs, to the exits on the outside, so it kind of, as those get... as those numbers accumulate as you go through the building, so there's some... that's how that is done.
That's matched the size of the building.
Yeah. Because the state official may say someday, well, you're not 900, you know, you're not 1,000 kids now, or, you know, but who knows in 10 years? So that's kind of the safety factor. It's based on the size of the space, not the actual occupants. So a couple of things that we've been able to do since the last time we met, we've actually reorganized the spaces to what I call the support spaces on the left side of the Activity Center. Still, the athletic directors and administrative assistants still on the top. We grouped the restrooms together. We reworked the locker rooms. This was all an attempt to get as much storage space as possible, so we tried to make sure that we didn't have any excess space, and we've actually been able to increase the storage room by a third. We thought that was value well received, so... And anytime we can get more space for you and not increase the footprint, that's what we try to do. So that's... And the other thing we've learned too, in working with Brian and his team, was that we can actually reuse the existing hot and cold water lines that have excess capacity for heating and cooling, so that's... those lines are right up there in the old entrance, right up in that area right there, so we can tap into that, so that's a real positive too, so that's good news.
And Mike, we have a family restroom. Can you point out where that is?
Yes, I can. I can move this cursor. So we have one... we have a single, what we call a single restroom, a shower, a locker area right here, so anybody who would... that could be utilized by a student with privacy challenges, and/or an official, and/or a staff member, and/or whatever you want to assign that to, or what we call a family restroom during spectator events, so. That's always a positive when you have that flexibility. So what we're looking at is as a... the area now, with regards to the 2019, there's always been conversations about doing the administration block in next year, and add that piece to the scope of project. So because of funding mechanisms and how that works, we have to keep that project separate. So my team is designing that now, but we're actually interfacing that with this project, so.
I'm confused. Could you... This is still within the dollars we designated that piece, or no? No.
Is this separate from the field house?
Yeah.
So...
The new offices?
Yes. Okay.
That's future expansion.
Right. They happen after.
So where would... The entrance would still be over here, correct?
Yes.
And then they go through where... they go through that door?
Yeah. It would be right through here, and then what we're planning on, this is the imaginary red line right here is the... that would all be built as this first piece, and then we're looking to bid this work in January 2019, and actually, it's construction's concurrent with the field house, so when everything's done, it's all done, both the admin area and the Student Activities Center.
This is something that's an extra cost.
Is there a cost estimate?
Yeah. So this would be... we're looking at a... you're looking at approximately, now, don't be alarmed, $200 a square foot, that's just the logistics of a house today costs over $150 a square foot, so that's... And this is... we're essentially infilling that area, but we're bringing the administrators out to this location for... to be at the front door. So with that said, we're planning for that, and it's the right course of that, it's the right avenue to proceed.
So how many square foot are we talking about here?
We're looking at approximately, it's about 36 by 90, and let me go to the next slide, because let's talk about what that space looks like. As I zoom in here, so everybody can see what we're talking about. So what we have is a potential... The red numbers are actually staff members that would be located at the front door, so as you begin to see, you can see a cumulative nature. So there'd be a new reception, and that reception area will control the access points through the vestibule doors, and then we have an attendance window right there, so we essentially moved the administration from the center of the building to the front door. It's kind of somewhat what we call "bury" today. And then you have a conference room, a workroom, office on the top, and then we designate that as a principal's office on the top right, and as you move around to the bottom, you have three more offices, and essentially a small training or support space for the Activity Center, a storage, and some restrooms. So if you ask me the question about square footage, and I'm not going to guess, I'm going to... It's about 30, less than 34 on a square feet.
We do have between $300,000 and $400,000 of the GEO bond left that we had discussed, put in towards that future project.
So this is... We have the money to do that?
Um, no. We...
What?
In the bank. We have the money.
Okay.
The majority of that estimate would come from the remaining funds from the general obligation bond issue. So we also received $43,000 back from the QZ app, the interest, since that's paid off while those monies were held, we earned interest, so we have some capacity there, so when we know more for sure, all the projects finish up this year, and we have those costs that we'll talk about, the dollars and cents of it. Didn't mean to hijack that.
No, you're fine. This needs to be discussed.
So, question.
Yes.
But to close off the courtyard, which was our goal, would that one wall be placed up, even though that section isn't built yet?
Yes, so we can ensure that this wall is part of this project, so this... The goal is this to be a standalone, but in reality, it really... now's the time to do it, because you got fire protection that has to be dealt with, I got a rate of wall that we have to design between the new and the existing construction, HVAC, you know, controls, we have to... we have the structure right there, we have all the other logistics going on at the same time. The key is, it's the most economical at this point in time than it will ever be.
I think the other thing to keep in mind is, while the bidding is staggered by a couple of months, the project work in completion will be set to finish at the same time. The construction for that will take less time than for the field house.
That is correct. So the plan is, come December, it's all done in 2019, it's all done, and you would never know that there could be... there was two actual projects, it was look like one.
And so, refresh my memory, why is it that we're doing it this way as opposed to how it was originally presented?
We understood that we had a cap that, from the standpoint of we could not exceed the $5 million threshold on the Spartan Activity Center, and then this would be above and beyond that scope of work.
I was pretty sure it was going to cost us $1 million when we first...
Well, that was our original goal, was we didn't know what it would cost to do all of this, so the original plan, these have always been treated as, even in your original documentation, as a separate carved-out piece, because we didn't think we could do it all under that cap. So we decided in talking with Randy and looking at options, if we're going to make our new main entrance and to secure the campus, we needed some office space, so we originally looked at just doing a reception and attendance area.
That's correct.
And keeping the offices where they were, but this was probably two sets of planes back when this was shared with you all.
Yeah, and I think we talked about having excess capacity in the GEO bonds, because we did not run the water line out to Fayette Central. That just wasn't going to be practical, so we had a considerable amount of money left from that project for just putting the well in versus this, and that would be what we will be committing to this and towards the gate.
Well, let's not...
Well, I just want...
Let Pam get on with these.
Right.
I want to make one more comment. This isn't just that we're going to build new offices, nice new offices. This is a key component to our security.
That's why I asked about the wall.
Yeah.
If that building wasn't going to be done first.
But I just think that's the way we have to look at this. This is a key component of our safety, to have that one main entrance, and the office people and the staff right there at that entrance.
Well, I knew that we didn't know how we were going to necessarily configure that with the field house, and I think there'd been... I can't remember some... we had some various projections, but I guess I did not recall hearing that this was going to be an extra cost above the cost of the field house, and maybe I just missed that, so.
I missed it too. That's a different type of...
I remember Janey saying we had enough money to do it, from basically what she said, because when we were talking about reconfiguring it, was that strange thing that you couldn't handle with the...
The odd angle one?
The odd angle one, yeah.
Yeah, but that didn't have to do...
No.
We asked you one time.
Yeah. Yeah, because that was when the office area and stuff was originally talked about, when was that odd angle thing back in May, or June, so.
So what's the extra expense estimated?
We don't know what our cost is going to be on the field house yet.
No.
So it may not be as much as we think. That's the first component. We have to see how much money we're going to have. Is that fair statement?
That's a good statement. We're going to bid the big one come up in November, so we're going to release it. You'll see it on the schedule show, and I'll go through that when you can expect additional information. And then we can... And then we know how we can strategize, and we need to massage the scope of work as well, so. But the key is, we got to get that first one, the large one, done first, and get those footings. This is really only about a four or five month construction, and that, so we have plenty of time to... The other one's over a year, so you see that we can stagger the starts of construction. So then, just to point out, this hasn't changed, but you see the lines of security we talked about last time. We had opportunities for one layer, or two layers, three layers. I added a couple of M's on the drawings, because now that we have to use that field house as a potential exit out of the courtyard, that door will have to be monitored as well, so if somebody... if somebody ever tripped that door during non-school hours, because it has a panic device, you push it open, there'll be a alarm there, and that will go off, and we'll know that. And also up there, we're looking at, we have a workroom at the... you see at the top here, I put another M. At some point in time, there may be a connection between the office area and the school for convenience, and/or mailroom, and some other components that may be accomplished as well, so that M's kind of secures this high school faculty from the admin area.
Where's that door come out in the building?
With this one?
Yeah. Where does that... Is that...
That's in the art room. I think it's one of the ceramics room right now.
Okay, so would that require any change to that?
It could, because if you do that, you may... you know, we may be looking at an option to bring it into the killing room. We know there's an old art room here, so we're still working through that, but the idea is, we want to plan for that down the road, so you're not hindered. Anything... Anything we can do now, so that we don't have to... if we work those dollars in the future, that's what we want to accomplish, right now when we're doing that work.
Do we have a plan for the space that is now the office area, since we're planning on creating a brand-new office area, or the offices?
That would be the next step to, you know, if we go forward with that office expansion, we would want to create... We talked with Randy about it, creating more of a student comments, still have their counseling department there, but opening it up some.
Okay.
Maybe using our Career Center kids to work on that.
Making it more user-friendly like that.
Yeah, we can certainly assist, because we've been doing that at all these schools, to give them a little bit extra space inside the building, and create a little bit of collaborative area. That'd be well-received, and we certainly have a lot of examples for you to look at. So no change here with the wood and synthetic floor, but just for those... Everybody knows what wood floor looks like. Let me show you what the synthetic floor might look like. So I have three examples. A heavy texture to a light. Your staff wants to have a light texture on the track, so if you want to pass that around, see what that might feel like. You know, I encouraged them not to use the heavy or medium texture, only because it's a lot harder to clean, so... But they still wanted a texture for running purposes, so that that was part of the... not a concession, but that's how you work with staff. part of the, not a concession, but that's how we work with staff and show them examples and this, and make sure that everybody understands what they're getting. Now, this would be the smooth surface, so those would be the basketball courts and the areas around the track. So what we always try to do is make sure we have three bidders, there's Robins, Connors, and Mondo. You may have heard of Mondo and Olympics, Connors, non-Olympic floors. That's the type of systems we're looking at, and it's, so that would be a smooth surface. So not only can we utilize for sports, I didn't really have to mention this last time, you know, marching band, cheerleading, you know, flags, you use that on that rubber floor all the time, so, okay? So the courts haven't changed, so there's no change there since the last time we talked. We have three competition courts, but really one wood floor that's actually where we have any type of competition events, the other two are designated for practice. One of the other comments, and we want to go ahead and stripe tennis courts on the two rubber, what we'll call athletic floors, so those will be permanently striped. So that's the only update there. With regards to PE, the badminton courts, they want a minimum of six, we talked about last time. These will not be striped, these will just have the corner marks. So what that would do is, they can put the tape down for the period, a short time, for a couple of weeks, that they'll use that for badminton, for PE purposes. So those are the level of details that we're now getting into. And here's another change, we're looking at actually flipping the long jump and pole running pit to the south wall, and also the discus to the north area. And the reason for this, if you were ever to do another project down the road and you begin to think about a weight room or something like that, and if that goes, it most likely would be inside the courtyard, begin to complete that and maybe provide additional quarters. You're getting pretty close to connecting some of these buildings via, through a real quarter. That'd probably occur up there, so if you want to move that away from that and actually have it closer to the exterior door for maintenance and, believe it or not, there'll be sand in this long jump pit. They'd have a lid, it'd be covered ninety-nine percent of the time, but when they're practicing long jump, they remove that lid, just like it is on a football field or... And the surface on those lids are the exact surface as what's on the adjacent areas. So you'll see just a piece of metal that, around the edge, that defines that lid. So batting cages are still located in the center, so these also support golf and softball, so we have that covered as well. And the exterior elevations, we're looking at what we call a split-faced masonry block as we talked about last time. It's the same material that's out on the NEF Science Center edition. And then we have a metal panel which you have up at the top of your building as well as some of the other support buildings on campus. And then we're looking at, and working with the pre-engineered building systems, they have more, we have longer windows, pre-meat ceiling, and these may get reduced and maybe a couple might get alternated, so we have great bidding. If we afford it, absolutely. If we can't afford it, well then, we have to consider only have a selective windows in certain areas. But more to follow on that, and you'll make that decision down the road. But we work with the manufacturer to just make sure that our concepts doesn't hinder them from building their system as economical as possible. So then, we have the new entrance again with metal panels and highlighted with a canopy and comes from high schools. And essentially, if we look at the schedule, we're looking at, the item in red right there, that's where we are tonight, we're just looking for design approval on our approach for the Spartan Activity Center. We'll come back, October ninth, we're looking at authorization by bid. October eleventh, that goes to the contractors. We have a pre-bid conference on site here, receipt bids November first. You guys will award the contracts November thirteenth, and then we'll issue a notice for receipt, and as soon as we get all of our permits and everything aligned, they can start work. And then we'll be talking about, we'll be talking about the next administration center, that other piece, that blue piece that we had so much discussion on. But we've got to get this one out of the ground started.
November thirteenth, our board meeting, where you say school will help you.
Yeah, I'll be back. That's okay, it's my job.
I have a question on you. Just the Activity Center now including the offices that we're proposing there, we're kind of estimating at this point roughly five million dollars, is that right?
We're looking at about four point five million dollars construction cost for that.
Okay, so there's a little range. Is that the high side of things, or is that the low side, or is that hard to determine?
We want to believe it's conservative, but there's, depending on the market, we've also seen an uptick in steel prices recently. Don't need to explain why. So, but we've also seen on some other jobs that we've recently bid, multiple bids, and that's always, what that is, is competition. So the key is competition. The key is making sure we have three to four bidders, and if we have that, we'll get good pricing, and that will set the price. But we estimate it right now at about four point five million, and we're trying to confirm that number by sharing our documents with local agency to do some confirmation.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Mike? So that's on the agenda for now as an action item, is to approve these designs to move forward and look for bids next month.
Okay, so I would like to entertain a motion to approve the design plans for the CHS Activity Center.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mark. Do I hear a second?
One second.
Thank you, Ann. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. All the same sign, motion carries. Okay, now we will move on to the approval of the location of the CHS solar project, even though Janie is listed here. Scott?
Yeah, that's okay. I'll share some things here and then introduce Brian. When we had some good discussion in our last meeting, what we had asked Performance Services, and the two gentlemen are here, was to look at land space that would work for solar panel So they looked at that, just unbiased, they looked at the different locations. You made some choices, we knew the board, we didn't want the one next to all the homes along Spartan Drive, and that was ruled out. So what the board charged us to do was get with Brian and Mr. Judd and have them talk with their stakeholders to look at their options for where we could place this to best meet our needs. And for the audience who's here, projected savings over thirty years will be around five million, that's a conservative number. We're not paying any money, and that's the thing I want to clarify. The project is estimated about two point four million, but we have to bid that as we would any other project. So we're not paying two point four million out of our funds. We're paying that lease for twenty years over the savings from what we paid Duke Energy. So some folks have asked, why can we afford to pay two point four million? We're not paying that, we're just paying that much less to Duke Energy. Does that make sense for everyone? So in effect, we're just saving our monthly payments from three hundred and fifty thousand approximately a year for electricity on the hill here. We're going to be paying substantially less.
Sixty, is it sixty percent less?
Yeah. So then, in theory, in twenty years, we own this equipment outright just by saving all that energy. And that's where we really start to see the huge savings in years twenty-one to thirty. So talked with Brian, I talked with Ryan with Performance Services, because I don't want to impact any of our student land areas. So I think we have a new solution that I'd like for them to share before we do anything more, because I think we found a solution to get us on Lot Four, which is right across the road here from our building. So it's on the south side of Crusoe. So Brian, do you want to go ahead and share what we discovered today?
Sure.
When we looked at a couple of options?
So thanks for letting me discuss everything. So again, as Scott was saying, Randy and I were tasked with making a recommendation based on a few certain things. One, the impact to students, impact to athletics, impact just overall to the campus up here. So our original thought was the option over in, yes, so option number three. And the reasoning for that was that we had a switchgear, which I won't get into the weeds on what that is, but we had to have a certain size of a switchgear. And currently, the only switchgear that we have big enough to accommodate is located directly behind the tennis courts in the chiller yard of the high school, and it's a two thousand amp switchgear. So that was, our recommendation was number three based on that, and also input from coaches and some different stakeholders. So we discovered, and we wanted to look at some different options based on some of the other discussions that we've had, and maybe some of the concerns that certain folks had, and so, you know, so we wanted to try to make it as the least impact to the students that we could. So in looking at option number four, we have discovered that we have a meter from Duke Energy that sits right in between Gray Road and Spartan Drive, so right about where the pointer is there. What we can do is, we can locate a standalone switchgear that would sit next to the meter, it'd be an outdoor switchgear that's covered a big box, and what we can do is run that switchgear bore straight under Spartan Drive and just go straight in to the site right here in option number four. So really, if you're looking at distance, it's substantially cheaper to go with option number four, and it's so much less of an impact as far as the directional boring would be. So again, that's, this is just kind of new information, and again, so option number four was, that was our second recommendation based on some factors. But again, as we studied it a little bit more, we found that we could put the additional switchgear right there along, it's not, you know, and then just bore straight underneath the road. So this is the recommendation that we're proposing now is option number four.
So this takes away the problem, we don't, we no longer have to go from here clear up to there to get this, right?
That's correct.
Which was going to cause, that was going to be very costly.
It was, it was going to, yeah. And the reason for that was that we do have a switchgear at the Career Center, but it's a six hundred amp switchgear. And what we had to have was two thousand amps at minimum. So we would have had to, you know, we've had to ran all the way around to the high school, but we determined that we can set a standalone switchgear out just across the street, so. Certain, no students are using that area.
No, just crows.
FFA, no athletics, no...
Just lawn oars. There are crows.
Just to make sure.
And I wanted to compliment the guys from Performance Services because they came over this afternoon because we were really looking at that option, and the switchgear piece was something that, you know, they came up with as an option that we could do. There will be some costs with that, I'm not for sure. Do you guys have an estimate of what that may be? It would be probably less than running line and all the way back.
Okay, cool.
But I think there's a lot of people in this room who are happy to hear that, and I want you to know, we really were trying to find another option, and the board was too. And I think we found a win-win, if that's up to your pleasure, obviously, but we can still make this happen and follow our timeline, I believe, is that right, guys?
How does this impact, we were looking at that at one time for future expansion of the project. Do we still have something on, do we have a Plan B for that? Because I know Mark had brought that up, the other one, if we want to expand, do we have any, this is down the road, do we have any sense now where that expansion might take place?
Well, I think, this is my recommendation to the board, is I say, let's get this solar field approved, installed, let's benefit over that whole lifetime of the savings, and then we reevaluate and we see how it's going, and then next year we look at, okay, are we happy with what this first phase was? And then we look at two. Now, I will say, if we look at the next option, we would have to run that, Brian, to that area by the tennis courts.
That's correct.
Then we would probably have to look at what would be our option for that, and...
But that's down the road.
That's down the road.
And in the meantime, we're saving lots of bucks.
Another question, though, also about that phase two, once the fieldhouse is built, there will be another meter, right?
Correct.
So...
Let me back up a little bit. So that's an option that we're looking at with the fieldhouse, is the addition of another meter.
So we may or may not need to do that if this is the site that's approved, and you put that service there.
Correct. Okay, well, the reason I asked that question was because if we looked at north of the Career Center, I can't remember what option that was, but...
Option one, I think.
That one?
Yeah.
Would that be able to be powered by a meter from the field, or could you switch them, or have that, you know what I'm saying, have that run to that fieldhouse meter?
Yes, you can. It doesn't really matter where the meter is located, it's a matter of the...
But that's closer, obviously.
Correct, correct. It's a matter of the switchgear that you have.
Yep, switchgear.
So we do have that potential at the high school.
Right.
So it gives us other options if we're happy with phase one.
Well, and Mr. Yari, I made a comment, and we had a conversation that really got my attention, I was thoughtful on his part. Who knows what the technology's going to be down the road? I mean, the footprint of a solar project like this may be considerably less than...
Well, look what's happened, somebody asked the last meeting, why didn't they put them on the roofs anymore? Well, they don't. And this was something that was very popular twenty-five, thirty years ago when solar first came in, because, and now, this just doesn't happen.
So we don't know.
And is there a technology that you're aware of out there that's looking at even different options with the solar? Is this pretty much... This crystalline is, the reason why we use it, it's proven, it's sixty years old, so it's obviously had a lot of improvements, but it's a technology that we can bank on, and we know it's going to last forty, fifty years. With everything I've seen, it lasts five, seven years. Stuff comes out, it's supposed to be great, but then it doesn't really pan out in the actual field, so we just want to improve in long-term, low-cost solutions.
I just commend everyone for looking into this further, that will not have an impact on students. So thank you very much.
And before we go to these, I want to inform the public that some of you were here, we had this originally presented to us at our last board meeting a month ago, and then we had a work session a couple of weeks ago to further discuss this. Then, board members talked to one another, there've been a lot of questions generated. Every board member took this very seriously, lots of questions back to Scott, back to the performance guys, back to us. So for those who have been worried, all of us took this pretty seriously. There was a lot of discussion that took place. But I don't want to ignore that you all took time out of your schedules to be here, and so if you would like to speak, I can read off...
Let me ask a question first, Leslie. Is this your recommendation then, Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, we, well, yeah. I was going to wait until he spoke, but yes, this is mine, and Janie and I have talked. This was new information. They came over at our request, looked at this as an option, worked with Brian, and we were really happy to find out that that meter, that was the big hangup that we figured out we could do and make a short run. So my recommendation is to seek your approval for the location of the panels to be at Site Four, which is south of the Career Center across the road here.
Okay, go ahead.
Ruining your view.
It's Kim's view, so. There are a bunch of crows out there now, so.
So with that, you all turned in, there are six of these, I think, so you are still welcome to speak if you would care to. Were you on here, Kate?
I believe so.
Go ahead.
I just want to thank everybody for looking into that, and thank all the community members and students that showed up to support this. I truly appreciate it, and I want to thank you all, thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Do you want me to go through these and see if you'd still like to speak? I'm welcome to. First one I have is Riley Loper. Do you want to speak, Riley?
Yeah, okay. I know that the solar panels would have really affected a lot of the Connswell Bay members, and we really appreciate you guys looking into it again and ending up finding a solution that can help all the students at the Connswell High School.
Thank you, Riley. Stuart Henry?
All right, go ahead.
Okay. Larry Garrett?
I'm fine, thank you.
Chris Boggs?
I'm good, thank you.
Michael Beal?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your participation, and I hope now that you'll come back, because this is probably the fullest we've been in a really long time. So you see, it's really pretty fun here, so...
And you also see, we do our homework, guys. You know, we did a, this was huge for us, and we did a lot... You know, we did a, this was huge for us and we did a lot of research, a lot of people did a lot of research. Because we want to do what's in the best interest of all the kids and FFA is such an integral part of the school and the community that anything that was going to potentially have a negative impact on you, we were going to take very, very seriously. And we did our homework, so see, even all retired teachers do their homework, right? So take that as a forewarning that you never quit doing your homework if you want to do a job well done. And I commend everybody involved with this to thank you.
And Mr. Henry gave up dinner with his wife and daughters the night on his 50th birthday.
Oh, holy cow. Well, happy birthday.
That is on TV now, Stuart, too.
The whole world knows how old you are.
The news examiner captured that in the minutes of the. I just want to say thanks to our students. We have a really great ag program, FFA program. You missed a part of it. And I just want to say to our students that, you know, becoming a part of your community and being a part of this is important. So, you know, just always be a part of your community, active citizens. I really, I was really heartened to see you all here and I want people passionate for what they believe in. And so this means a lot from the superintendent. And just keep in mind, those of you who stay here and are a part of this community, I hope all of you stay here and raise your kids here, but we're going to be seeing potentially more than $5 million savings over the next 30 years with this project, which is really important for our schools and our taxpayers. So cool stuff. So thanks for coming out, I appreciate it.
So we'll move on to making a motion. Do I hear a motion for approving the location number whatever over there?
I will make that motion.
Thank you, Laurie. Do I hear a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Chris. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We had originally divided up these agenda items because we knew there would be discussion about the location. So this may feel backwards because we've decided the location before we decided the project. I see some laughter over there. I'm guessing that's what this is about. Okay.
Follow the discussion we've had the last week. You know, it's been good.
Yeah, that's right. So now we will move on to approval to proceed with the solar project. And I maintain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mark. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Andy. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. You are welcome to stay till the end of the meeting. We have just a few more things, or you may exit if you choose.
It is budget hearing, so.
You thought it was exciting up till now?
Exciting stuff, guys.
But you guys can't see that if you want.
Yeah. We'll give you a moment.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
See, and I thought they were here for my special.
Oh.
Oh, cute.
My special.
Wow.
Thank you, performance. Thank you, everybody.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Go get some cake.
Yes, there is. Thanks.
I think they're looking at.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. You almost wanted to shower.
Thanks, Randy.
He's going to balance the room.
I would like.
I'm just thinking.
I'd like to take a moment, I could have done it in front of our guests, which I probably should have, to thank our guys from Performance. Because you've been very patient, you have fielded lots and lots of questions. I know every question when any of us talked, we threw to Scott and I know I saw you and you'd been already receiving a lot of those questions. So, you know, that, that makes all of us feel good about working with you as well, that you're so open to hearing our questions and being problem solvers with us.
Thank you. We appreciate the opportunity and we look forward to a successful project.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now move on to discussion items. Public hearing on 2019 budget, Ms. Kellen Tollit.
Yeah, this is, we've all been waiting. With bated breath, Jane. I really did try and keep my list of comments to a minimum, knowing that this evening was going to be long. This is a mandatory part of the budgeting process in that we are required to hold hearings and present information related to the budget and then allow community input should it be desired. So tonight's process includes the hearings for the 2019 budget, the 2019 capital projects plan, and the 2019 to 2023 bus replacement plan. These budgets and plans will be presented for your consideration of approval at the October 9th meeting. Notices of the plans were published on August 28th. We are no longer required to publish the bus replacement or the capital projects plan. We publish a notice that the community members can find it on our homepage for Fayette County Schools and they can click on it and they can review it. Should the plan, either one of the plans require modification to add to it during the year, we will have to repost that. That's brought to you for consideration. It's posted before and we'll have to have another hearing on the modification of the plan should that be needed. The education fund revenues basically come from student enrollment, the basic grant, special ed, career and tech ed. These are, the education fund is for the payment of student instruction and learning expenses. In addition to that, capital projects, computers for students, for example, that used to be a part of the capital projects plan are now a part of the education fund. The proposed budget for the education fund, which includes a transfer from the education fund to operations to help cover some of those costs that used to be in the general fund, is $22,032,607. The operations fund is your tax revenue generated fund. It is your non-student instruction costs that were formerly in the general fund, basically your overhead and your operations. It has the non-student instruction related capital projects, the transportation costs, and the bus replacement costs all rolled into that fund. The proposed budget for it is $10,919,897. The rainy day fund does not carry any tax rate or any estimated revenues. We propose expenses only if they're needed to cover the bridge payments for our certified retirees, potential circuit breaker impact to the operations fund. Several years ago, the board approved using the rainy day fund to cover some technology staff costs should it be needed. We have not used it to date. However, with all of the student and staff computers we have now, we are looking at potentially adding staff to that department and those expenses may come out of the rainy day fund. You can include education fund expenses as well. The proposed budget for the rainy day is $2.7 million. Transfers can be made between any of those funds, the education, the operations, the rainy day, upon approved resolutions from the board. So you can spend from them directly. Or if you need money in one fund and another fund has the cash, I can present a resolution for you to consider to actually move that cash. This is the first opportunity to do that with the rainy day fund. In the past, you had to budget for it and spend for it out of the rainy day only, so. Additionally, we have the debt service fund, which is a tax revenue fund. The QZAP retired this year, so we no longer have payments for it, but this year we have the general obligation bonds that roll on. The Common School Loan for Technology retires in June of 2019. The QSCAB retires in December of 2020. Our GO bond issue we did last year retires in December of 2021. And the CMS bond issue, the gift that keeps on giving yet, will retire in 2026. So the proposed budget for the debt service fund is $1,837,307. The pension debt, this is the last year for a tax levy for the pension debt. Those pay off in January of 2019. The proposed budget is $97,240. This does require levy neutrality, which can only be accomplished by reducing the levy of the operation fund. So would you like me to move on to the bus replacement plan and then capital projects? Or do you have any questions related to the 2019 budget? I'll keep moving. Bus replacement plan has changed this year from a 12-year plan to a five-year plan. Again, these plans can be reviewed by clicking the link on the Fayette County School Corporation homepage. In the proposal, we include, we're projecting the replacement of up to eight buses, five 66 passenger buses, one special education bus, one mini white bus, and one 22 passenger bus. The proposed bus replacement cost is $715,000. Again, this is bundled in with the amount that I gave you for the operation fund budget. The capital projects plan, and it was advertised by the state for all items costing $10,000 or more, its equipment and capital projects, et cetera. The plan can be reviewed from the homepage. Not required, but included in our plan because it had been our past practice and it provides more transparency, in my opinion. I have identified the potential sites for the expenditures, capital in nature. I have identified the instructional equipment costing less than $10,000 per item that is built into the education fund. And I've also included the operational equipment costing less than $10,000 that's included in the operations fund budget. So this is really where we expect all of what all of our capital expenditures to be. If anything is $10,000 or more that has not been identified in the capital projects plan, we have to bring that back to you for your consideration. If it's less than that, we do not. We can just laterally move those monies. We can't spend more than we've budgeted, but we can make those moves without having to come and seek permission. The total included in the education fund for capital expenditures is $582,290. The amount that's included in the operations fund budget for capital expenditures is $2,772,300. As always, the levies and the tax rates that have been advertised are higher than what we anticipate them to be because with DLGF, we can always cut it when we know what the true assessed valuation is, but it cannot be raised. So the summary is in this notice to taxpayers of the total budgets. You will see that the estimated levy is really high. It will not end up being that. We always do that. At your places this evening, there was this small half-page after I had prepared your budget, the Department of Local Government Finance came out with this new form that was mandated as a part of the capital projects plan. So you probably want to insert that in the operations fund section of your notebook. That's all I got.
Okay, I need clarification on something because I was writing down and I'm, this won't be the first time that I seek clarification over the coming year.
I feel important when I'm needed.
Remind me the difference between what capital expenditures come out of the education fund, which is obviously a much smaller amount than out of the operations.
That is hands-on technology staff that provides, you know, support for the student instruction. So almost all of our technology staff does that. And in addition to that, I have built in amounts for each of the buildings for potential purchases, smart boards, computers, that type of thing that will be used in the classroom for student instruction, projectors. So if you look at that, you'll see each building gets a sliver of money in the education fund and then they get some equipment money in the operations fund also.
Appreciate us going beyond what's required concerning transparency. Think we should do that whenever possible. I appreciate you doing that.
We still have the flexibility to move, but you know, it does allow, it says where we think we're going to spend the money, where we see our needs. Thanks.
Just a question, since we already have a bus replacement plan extended out from the current, before the change takes place, how do we modify that from 20 years to five? Is that?
It's not.
It's not a big deal?
The plan gets revisited every year. It used to be the capital projects plan was a three-year plan. Nothing matters beyond year one. It just, if they're not already doing it, it forces schools to look at what their needs are going to be over a period of time. The plan used to be 12 years because they said you need to replace a bus every 12 years. Well, okay, when I first started out, it was every 10 years. They thought you would replace a bus, but you had the flexibility of replacing earlier or later than that. I mean, you can have so many factors that impact that.
Right.
You know, stop, 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 stop. In town is a lot harder on a bus and you could have to replace that bus really before that 12. This provides, being part of the operations, a little more flexibility to do that because your only restriction now is not a cap on a capital project or a bus replacement fund. It is your cap on all of your operations fund. So you may, if you have to replace extra buses, you may have to sacrifice on some capital projects. And then the next year, maybe you don't have to replace as many buses and you could push more money towards capital projects because it's now all bundled into one budget.
But previously, the money that we had budgeted for bus replacement had to be used for bus replacement then.
That's correct.
Okay, so what this does is allow us, we have a pool of money to use and we have a whole lot more flexibility within certain parameters as what we can use it for.
Yes. Previously, we were allowed to budget $840,000 of our capital projects money to go towards utilities. That had been the same amount for 10-plus years. It's just, that's what you got, no increase. Now, the entire operations fund gets the growth quotient every year. So, you know, we'll see maybe up to 4% increase in that any year, or usually closer to 3, 3.2 for that growth quotient. So that number will be allowed to add more for that also.
So this allows us to use our money more effectively and more efficiently where we need it, rather than worrying how, if we don't spend it, we lose it kind of thing.
Yeah. We didn't lose much.
No, well, there's not. That's not going to happen with you, with doing this, but the, just the flexibility in charge, because that was just, that seemed a little absurd.
It does free up some things. There are some other handcuffs that come with it, but by and far, I believe the schools will come out better with this new funding mechanism.
Okay, thank you, Janie. All right, now we will, oh, I guess we're summary public comment. Oh, summer school reports. I was just looking at these bullets and wondering if we could do this. We did, summer school reports, Ms. Coach Sorrow wants, what we've all been waiting for.
Yes, and I thought the crowd was here for that. In your package, you receive.
In your package, you received a summary of the summer school programs that we put in place this summer. And I've asked Mia McQuerry to briefly just give you some highlights of Jump Start and then I'll talk a little bit about elementary and then Mr. Judd is going to highlight the CHS summer school program. Thank you, Mia.
You're welcome. Welcome, and thank you for allowing me to share with you. Jump Start 2018 took place July 16 through July 27th, excuse me, at each elementary school from 8:30 to noon. There were 172 students that signed up in May to attend the summer program and 154, or 90% of those students actually participated. This is a 75% increase in participation compared to 2017. 87% of the students who attended were present eight out of the 10 days. So, we definitely saw a nice improvement in attendance. I gave you a lot of information on the letter. If you have any other questions you'd like to ask me at this time, feel free to do so.
And this was our largest group of kindergarten Jump Start. And so far, this, this is our fourth year, I believe, right?
Fourth year.
So, we've had our greatest attendance. So, word keeps spreading and we're doing a lot of advertising and, and continue to, you know, to thank the foundation for their support, potentially get that as well. Getting more numbers and better attendance is pretty good, maybe it is.
Do we have any sense of the impact yet? Because these kids that started Jump Start in the first year will be taking the iRead this year, correct?
Yes.
Yes. So, I'm wondering, you know, if, if, how that's going to, that, having that Jump Start, how that is going to impact really one of the first benchmarks that students, that students have as far as their readiness is concerned. I would be really curious to see, to track those benchmark, to track those Jump Start kids and see how they did on iRead comparison to, to some of the others since that's an assessment that everybody uses. And, and I, I can't believe that Jump Start has not had an impact on those students, but it would be nice to have a little data to, to support that for the future because we do have funding for the, from the foundation. But if we could have some empirical data that showed, look, this program really helps these kids down on a longitudinal type way, we might be able to get funding from different sources other than Fayette County Foundation.
I think, I agree with you. I think the, the most important part of the Jump Start, and Mia, you can attest to this, is just getting those kids in there and getting them exposed to those procedures and expectations because that allows the teacher to start day one.
Yeah.
Running. And really, our focus is more on the procedures and expectations than it is on the academic piece for Jump Start, getting those, start to build those relationships. I think with the iRead threat, I think we'll start to see some gains in achievement with our Title I preschool and our Head Start kind of coming together and really focusing on that early intervention piece.
But the fact that the, the kindergarten teachers can start from day one is just, is, you know, it has to have some sort of impact down the road because you don't have, you don't lose all that time.
Right.
You, you simply don't lose all that time. So, it has, it has to have some impact. But I would be really curious to see, you know, if we can, because there are a lot of corporations, there are a lot of educational pieces out there that will give you grants if you can show data to show that this program has worked in this particular way, particularly with our at-risk kids.
And I think the board's support with starting this Title I preschool, I think we're going to see a lot of dividends there as well. I think it's hard to put a tangible number on a two-week window when the kids are five, but if you remember the data I showed you this summer in our state of the schools, our kindergarten readiness continues to slide as that group comes in on NWA. But yet, when you look at the growth those kids have over the course of that year, our kindergarten teachers are doing, they're well exceeding the national averages. So, I think that speaks a lot to the quality of teaching we have. But I think with Jump Start and with the preschool, we're going to start closing those gaps even more. I'm really excited to see next year, these kids in kindergarten, the difference. Hopefully, we'll see an uptick in our beginning numbers with these kids.
Well, the free preschool is, is a no-brainer. If you don't front load, you can't, you can't do very much. And anything we can do to help front load our kids is, is a better, better situation.
I, I just wanted to ask, in the letter, you talk about the social workers, social workers set up meetings, make phone calls to parents to help prepare their children for school. That kind of dovetails with something I was actually going to talk about towards the end during our report items because I came back from the School Board Association Annual Conference and one of the workshops I went to, they have a, a reading program that they do with preschool and kids coming into kindergarten. And they, they're funded by the United Way, this program, but they pay teachers to be in the buildings to meet with parents, to teach them some of these various skills you're talking about, along with food, recipes, it's good for Kelly to hear, how to, you know, whether you send food to your kids, what kind of food helps to prepare them in the morning, some really basic knowledge that many of us may think is not necessary, but obviously, some of our parents need that help. So, I was just wondering how much, because this says meetings and our phone calls. Did you get very many parents that came in to meet?
We had both.
Okay.
This was sort of a, a goal of mine because it goes back to the goal of Mr. Collins in building relationships. So, the main thrust of those phone calls and meetings were to build relationships with parents.
Yeah.
And we read the feedback and parents said, "I feel like I'm a part of the school. I feel like I better understand the safety measures in place for my children when they're in that building." And this happened in all six buildings.
Okay.
So, it was mostly a building of relationships and letting them know what they serve, how they serve in their positions. And so, parents could see what the building was like, where these children go to special classes. However, I do know some programs are coming and I know Mrs. McCollum knows that this is coming. My daughter's coming to town and as all of you know, she's a dietitian with Chartwells and she is actually going to be teaching parents.
Okay.
Programs. So, I know Mrs. McCollum's going to be setting up a lot of different programs to educate her parents throughout the nine months. You know, we did some things like to, to Jump Start even our parents.
That's what I would actually.
This is what school's about and this is what our expectations are and this is what we need you to do. But it's just really building those relationships so they feel comfortable. I know one time I taught adult ed and one day I just decided, "Why did you drop out of school?" And they said, "I didn't have anyone I could trust." That was majority of what they said. And so, when Mr. Collins became superintendent, I thought, "This is going to be the key to the success in a community like this." So, programs are being built everywhere and Jump Start's just a small piece.
Right.
But I know our, it's going to be a greater impact with our preschools and other things that we're doing. So, it was a very positive. We had wonderful, we did a survey and parents had wonderful things to say about it.
Okay.
They felt like they knew more about the school. And all of these were from kids who, from parents who did not have children in school already.
Yeah.
The other parents say, "You know, I have children. I do know the way." But we Jump Start that for new, brand-new parents, so.
Right. That's a good piece. I'd like to see in there.
Yes.
Great. Thank you, Mia.
Thank you.
Interesting note, this morning I was, I'm on the, I used to be Community Voices. I'm on the education platform. And we had a meeting this morning and the focus of our meeting this morning was providing some programs. And Natco Credit Union out of Richmond is going to be a corporate sponsor and really help us. And where our focus is, was there, was on these parents and on the mental thing and teaching them financial literacy, some nutrition things. There's a lot of things that were going on in this, in this particular program for parents, for young people to better prepare them. And Natco has this program working. It's a 16, 15-week program working in Richmond and they are bringing it to Connersville to, through the, this community coalition. And it's, we talked with people from the adult education today. There were people from other social service agencies there. We're planning some events to get people more involved. We're having a field day type thing in, in the end of September was a Taste of Connersville kind of thing. Lots of activities, lots of information being presented. But this is just, this all kind of dovetails together. And, and the nice thing is it's all community involvement. Everybody's set in toward the same goal and I think we have a more cohesive situation right now than we've had before. We want to include the schools, but this, and the schools are frequently the impetus for it, but it's nice to see the other parts of the community getting involved and willing to, to give their time and effort. So, this is really interesting that this, all this, all these good things are beginning to happen at this time because we, it's September 29th, we're having a big, a big thing through the farmer's market and nutrition, education, literacy, the, the whole thing for a lot of people in town. So, attend. It'll be down at the courthouse. But lots of other people are doing good stuff too. It's, it's great.
That's awesome. While Randy makes his way up to the podium, just briefly, for summer school and elementary, the admin team decided to do it a little differently and we put our resources and our focus on our third graders. And the instructional focus was on the reading foundational skills that align to the iRead three test, which all prepare for prior to the class of the end of third grade. We had 54 students in grade three participate. They did have an opportunity to retake the test if they were not successful in passing that test in the spring. And we had 26 students pass the summer retake. So, we had three great teachers that were devoted and spent a tremendous amount of time planning and just making sure that it ran very smoothly. We also decided to do something in addition to our kindergarten Jump Start. We did a second grade Jump Start with a select group of kids who we identified using NWA as maybe needing some additional support before they entered those third-grade reading standards in order to help kind of give them a little bit of a push so that when they were at the end of third grade and they were going to take that iRead three assessment, they would be prepared. So, we had about 40 of those students participate. So, we're really looking forward to seeing those kids and how well they come out on the iRead three at the end of the summer, so.
So, we're identifying children at the end of second grade and including them.
Yeah. Just giving them a little extra push so that when they enter that third grade with that teacher, that they've already had some front-loading of those third-grade standards. And then, middle school, high school. Mr. Jones?
So, you save the best for the last.
For the last, that's right.
It is my pleasure to be here tonight just for a few minutes to talk about a very successful summer program at CHS. If you remember, we changed the format a little bit. We only had 19 days of summer school, starting the day after graduation. We went from five hours a day to four hours a day. So, we were there from 8 to 12 and the kids got free lunch and free breakfast. We gave them the breakfast as they walked in, so we didn't use class time for breakfast. If you also remember, we also want the kids to be there. So, if they missed more than one day of summer school, a lot of times, they were told not to come back. Now, if it got towards the last part of summer school and they had really good grades and they'd been there and they'd been there and something happened and they missed, we allowed them to come in and make us some hours up and keep their credit. We've always done that, at least for the last dozen or so years. Once again, we allowed incoming freshmen to take summer school. If you remember in the past, Mrs. Denham and middle school had their own summer school for students that did maybe meet the standards to go on to the high school. They had to go to summer school and show success there before they were allowed to pass on. Couple of years ago, we decided that why don't we just take those kids, those at-risk kids, and make sure that they take high school classes? And if they can prove to be successful, they get, they hit the ground running. They come into high school with the credit. And again, we did that this year and it was very successful. Mrs. Denham and the two assistant principals at the middle school came almost every day of summer school to make sure their kids were there. If they were not, they got a phone call. And unfortunately, some of the kids decided that it wasn't important enough to come and so they're still at the middle school and I haven't, I haven't seen them this year. We, we see that kind of as a, a Jump Start for high school and it, we're seeing some really good things. The kids are coming in knowing that, hey, I can be successful at the high school. I know my way around. I know some of the teachers. And we also allow fresh, incoming freshmen to come who are not in that at-risk group. So, I want to give you a few of the numbers that you probably have in front of you. We had 144 students earn 158 credits online this year. That's the most students we've ever had take online classes. We make them pay $50 for a $250 class, so they have some skin in the game. So, that was a 91% pass rate.
Wait, I'm confused with what we've got. That says the onsite summer results were 144.
That's right. You're right.
Okay.
Thank you for correcting me. It's been a long day and I'm going to the eye doctor October 1st. I'm telling my wife that. That is onsite, 144 out of 158. That's quite a few more credits than we, we've earned for a couple of years. Also, the online increased dramatically. I don't know if you have the 2017 statistics on there. Last year, we had 86 students online. They earned 82 credits. This year, we had 129 students earn 159, 159 classes were earned by 129 students. There were only 10 failures. I didn't say that right. 129 students took 159 classes. There were only 10 failures, so they earned 149 credits. So, overall, with these 47 students who participated in summer band, with the 20 agriculture students, we had 340 students earn 374 credits. Last year, we also had 340 students take classes at the high school and online, but they only earned 325 credits. So, we're improving. I can't say enough about the teachers who decide to go, come right back to work after, you know, we went to school almost at graduation and they came back for four weeks. And they do a great job working with the kids, making sure that they're feeling welcomed and cared for. I also had the experience this summer of being around three grade school teachers. I've never been hugged so much by students in my life. I thought I was going to say the teachers, not the teachers. Those third graders, I think I would like being around them more often. And I can tell you that Beth Fuller, Beth Riley, Mallory Wagner, and Yvonne Dunkle gave Fayette County School Corporation everything they had. They came in before they were paid, week before we were in school in summer school. Elementary was not. They were in several days working. Every day, they were at least an hour early and every day, they stayed one to two hours after the kids left. I haven't seen anything like that for a long time that I saw this summer with those three. So, that's why it was so successful. Those three worked.
They did.
And Andy Vaughn, the educational assistant that helped them, they worked very hard for our kids and our corporation. So, I just wanted to put a plug in for them. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to.
The change, do you like the change, the change? We talked about the change in format from the five-hour classes to the four-hour classes and that, as opposed to the, the ones we'd had years ago, whether they went six weeks and like two and a half hours a day. Did, did this format, which seems to be kind of a compromise between the two, did this seem to work better?
It's still four hours of class is still a long time. I still like the two and a half hours for six weeks. Some kids can take two classes that way. They stay for the whole five hours, but at least they get to switch gears.
Yeah.
But we're seeing success, so why change a good thing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public comments. Persons wishing to make the board aware of suggestions, ideas, and or comments may address the board at this time. Comments which involve personnel or students must be discussed in private. Seeing none, we'll move on to report items. Superintendent's discussion group report. Principal Director's reports. Director of Human Resources report.
I don't think I have anything tonight, but I did hear from Mike Surprey that he came through today and is recovering, so it's on call today, so good news for Mike.
Good. Thank you. Director of Finance report.
Thank you. Pass. Thank you.
Assistant Superintendent report.
I'm also going to pass.
Holy cow. Superintendent's report.
I will.
I know you can.
I've got a lot of things, but first, congratulations to Andy. I've got a lot of things, but first, congratulations to Andy and Amanda Yarian on the birth of their little girl, and so...
Ruby.
Ruby is, it's exciting, I've seen pictures, so congratulations. I also want to acknowledge Terry Miller, our pink tie guy, if you saw anything about that. But Terry, would you just really briefly share how much money your group raised for cancer awareness?
Yeah, I was a participant with the Central Indiana Susan G. Komen, pink tie guy, it was a collection of five of us in central Indiana that were, you know, taking on a fundraising event. Between the five, over $125,000 was raised over the course of three months.
Awesome.
Excellent. That's really cool. You know, our staff, they do so many other things outside of just being at school, so we have a lot of staff involved in a lot of things. That's something that's important to me and my family with that as well, so it's touching many lives. I also wanted to commend just this first month of school and this startup we've had. I think it's been a really smooth start overall, and that doesn't happen without a lot of hard work and planning, and a lot of dedication by our teachers. So I just want to put that out there. We have a great group of people supporting our kids, and it's important our community knows that, the dedication of our staff, so I'll let go with that.
Okay, for the good of the cause.
I'd like to shout out, I got attacked in the Kroger's by a very, very happy mother, Kelly Schaefer, whose son Brayden plays on the CHS football team, came up to me in Kroger's, she says, Brayden's going to AT&amp;T Stadium! He was chosen, there were 6,400 kids that were applied, and 99 of them are going, have been invited to go to AT&amp;T Stadium in Dallas, Texas for an All-Star game in January. And she couldn't, I can't remember anybody, maybe Mark does, can't remember anybody that's been in a national type thing like this, particularly in the area of football. And, but they're very, very excited about that. He happens to date my next-door neighbor, so I harassed him in the yard, but he's very, very excited about going, and, and he says, he said, he's pleased for himself, but he says he's really pleased for Coach Kelly and the program, because somebody, in watching the whole team play, picked him out to recognize him for this particular honor, and they had to send tapes and stuff like that. So it's just really, really cool for, for Connersville High School to have somebody at Dallas Cowboys Stadium up on that humongous big board, whose name will appear there in his picture. But that's in January, and there's some costs involved, and he said, his parents said they're probably be doing some fundraisers, but I thought, what a really cool thing, because he's a, he was our homecoming king also, which was also kind of cool. But just, you know, to, to have our kids and have them recognized on a national level for so many different kinds of things, I think we ought to really, really celebrate. Brayden's, Brayden's a happy camper, and his parents are very, very proud, and we should be very, very proud of his accomplishments, being recognized in that way.
Thank you, Mia. Anybody else?
Yeah, I'd like to say, thank you to the administrators, Mr. Hensley, Mr. Judd, for finding an alternative site for the solar panels there. You didn't, you didn't just kind of, I don't want to say give up, but I mean, you really dug deep and really found something different, so that was going to work better, I think, for, for everybody, you know? And as you can see, there's huge support for FFA, even though it only was a couple of acres. I mean, it's, it's still, if we don't have to utilize their land for that, you know, find an alternative source, that's much better. So thanks for doing that. And also, you've kind of stepped up to the transportation director position, right? Interim?
Interim.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Thanks for doing that. Awesome, so shout out there, because it's a tough job. My dad fills me in on occasion, and so, you know, it's, it's, some people forget about that, you know? They forget about that position and forget about the bus drivers and the impact they have, but, so, thanks again for doing that.
I just wanted to bring up a couple of quick things. I did go to the Indiana School Board Association's Annual Conference, and there were a few interesting things I heard. I did get to listen to Michael Dorn, who's the safety expert with Safe Havens, I think he's the director, a lot of people are familiar with him. He was really excellent to hear. Lots of good ideas in our, in the safety, whatever it's called, the safety conference was right next door. We had several people from our corporation there. So I was, I want to thank the corporation for allowing me to, to go to that. One idea I heard that I thought was really cool, and Mark would appreciate this, is somebody brought up the fact that they have students from their government class that attend board meetings. This was in a breakfast I went to, and people were comparing notes on who attends their board meetings. Had I known how many people we would have had, I could have said, oh, we've had a board meeting where we had like 50 people there, but generally... So they do have government students that come to board meetings. And I don't know if we've discussed that, or even having a student representative that attends board meetings, and...
We had that discussion. You were from national this past...
That's right. Thanks you brought that up.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, and this additional thing about having government students have to attend or come to a meeting like this. So I thought that was interesting. There's two other things that I wanted to mention. One, or a couple, maybe three things, maybe two things. One is, I looked on the, our Fayette County School Corporation website, and I noticed there is nothing on the front, on the homepage that I could find about safety. I don't know if we need to have any statement about safety, it's, it's the buzz thing now. What I did look at was our Fayette County School Corporation guarantee. And I just thought that might be something to come up for discussion again. I don't know if you've looked at it recently, but I personally think it's, it's not a realistic guarantee. We guarantee that if anybody in the community goes to employ somebody and they're not sharp enough with their skills, we'll take them back. That's not realistic, we're not really going to take them back. I mean, maybe, maybe, maybe Randy wanted me and I was going to take them in, but I would like to see us look at that, because I don't know that that's, I don't know why we have guaranteed.
It was good glitter.
It probably was good glitter, and I would probably prefer to see something about safety. We, I've had a lot of parents who just ask what we're doing. We've, you know, Scott's brought things up at board meetings, I think we've tried to inform the public about what we do, and I think it might be a good addition. And maybe that's what we include. I think it's in part of our mission statement about safety, but in this day and age, and now that I attended the conference where I heard Michael Dorn, I just think, no, it might be something to look at.
We are a good update, and that's one of my goals this year, is to look at our why and redefine our vision.
I know you talk with your teams about mission statements.
So that's a big school-wide process, district-wide process.
The resource officers have been so widely well-received. I've had the opportunity to talk to several of them that have been at the middle school, and they were pleasantly surprised and very pleased with the interaction to the students, because most of the time when police officers interact with that age group of students, it's a very negative, kind of, it's been a very negative, stressful thing. So they're getting the opportunity just to hang out with the kids and talk with them, and I think that gives the child a much safer sense with the, with the police present, and also with the parent. You know, they feel as if we're investing that money to make sure that we have officers, certified officers in our buildings to, and it's just another layer of, another layer of safety. And the impact on the students, I think, has been very, very positive. They, they talk to them, they come up and they talk to them, and they're interacting, and it's not the us-against-them type situation that frequently they see in their home environment. So hats off to the, the officers that are, resource officers that are in our buildings. I think they're doing a fantastic job, and they're just really very new at it, but I think that relationship piece can only grow as a result of that.
The only other thing I wanted to raise, a few of us have had a discussion about this, about adding work sessions perhaps, or discussion, and they'd be public work sessions where we can discuss some things that are happening that, Scott, that you've been working on. I think our last work session was a productive one, when we talked about the solar panels, and we generated some good discussion. And I know I've had conversations with a couple of board members, and we have talked about an opportunity to discuss things at a public meeting, not as a discussion item, something that maybe administration has brought up, or a board member has a concern with. And so I would like to entertain the notion that we might do that quarterly, either just, or, I'm not really sure how to organize that, but I, I know we've kind of, there's been a little banter back and forth, and I'd like to consider that, so those are just the things I wanted to bring up. Anything else anybody has tonight? Okay, well, with that, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Mark, wake up. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Chris. All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Please. [inaudible].